Okay, it's um six thirty. Um, well, because this is a Zoom meeting, we have to do things a little bit different. We'll have to do a roll call as to see who's here. My name's Dave Perry, I'm the chair. Rich Archer, you're here?
Here.
Uh, Mark?
Here.
Bob?
Yeah.
And Perry.
Present.
Okay, um, does anybody want to, um, do we need to take minutes, Mary, or because it's recorded, I think it's one of us at least should be jotting some stuff down?
Yeah, if you could just normally take minutes, it is recorded if they need to look back on that, but the the recording doesn't take the place of the minutes.
Okay.
Rich, I I think I heard.
Yeah, I think whoever comes in last.
No, I heard Rich, I heard Rich volunteer.
I think Mark said he was late because he had to go get a pen and paper.
I I retired from that.
Uh, Rich, would you mind?
Binder there.
Rich, come on, Dave. You're still on my side. Rich, would you mind jotting out some notes?
The things I do.
Yeah, I know, you're a lovely man.
We love you for it.
As you should.
Okay, thanks, Rich. Rich Archer is going to be um at the acting clerk this evening, taking minutes. So I will open up the um the hearing. It's hearing number twenty-one dash zero-one. It's for earthland development for a special permit from section three point two three. Uh, he was uh record requesting a special permit again. I understand the property is in a business, green business district, it's kind of split between the four of them. And um, he's looking for a special permit. What I'll do is I will open up the um, the meeting to the um, the applicant. If you could state your name clearly so we can get that down, that'd be great. Anytime during the meeting, the board may interrupt you and ask you some questions. Are you looking for a special permit? A special permit, there are two things you have to show the board that the um, that it doesn't segregate from the intent of the bylaw, nor is it harmful to the neighborhood. Um, so with that said, I'll open the meeting up to a representative from earthland development. And um, we will take it from there. I will explain the um, uh, decision-making process and everything at the um, before we close the hearing, so that um, you know what we have to do. With that said, if there is a person from earthland development that would like to speak up, now would be the time.
I'm Trevor Fletcher, I'm from Graz Engineering, uh, we're the engineering company that subdivided the land and uh, did all the site plant, site work design on it. And uh, yeah, so basically, we just have this lot that got split up into uh, three lots. Two of them houses are are going up on them right now because they were uh, by right in the green business district. This last lot just was split uh, between the green business and the business.
Can I interrupt you for just a second?
Absolutely.
There was one thing that I forgot to say, I had filled out a um, conflict of interest disclosure notice earlier and gave it to um, Brian, the town administrator. I know um, I know Paul from Graz Engineering. He's uh, working on a project that I'm working on as well. It's uh, in New Hampshire and um, I filled out a conflict of interest, I don't have anything to gain no matter how this vote goes tonight, and there's any of my immediate family, and Brian already has my paperwork for this. So I just wanted to make that clear because it's it's recorded. Sorry, Trevor, I just forgot to say that before.
It's all set. Uh, yeah, so this last lot was just split between the green business and the the business district and um, it's kind of an odd way that the that the zoning district lines kind of went through there. And uh, we went through originally trying to do uh, some sort of commercial development. Uh, but at the end of the day, there's not much room on the site, so we uh, decided just to put another uh, single-family residence there. The surrounding neighborhood is mostly residential, except for the uh, the building right behind, which had various uses over the last couple of years, as I understand it. And uh, is currently not really anything, uh, it's it's a commercial property that I don't think anybody's running an operation out of. So all the other uh, properties around that area are pretty much residential, so I think it'll fit right in with the uh, rest of the neighborhood. And yeah, that's pretty straightforward on this one.
Okay, anybody uh, is um, any board members have any questions, uh, reviewing the plan?
I've I've got a question, I'm looking at the uh, the plan. And does this land, does it go all the way out to one nineteen? Is this lot touching one nineteen?
So what this uh, lot does, it's kind of weird, one nineteen, the layout has a little prismatic shape that comes down uh, into where Ashby Road runs into it. So it it does touch the right-of-way of one nineteen, but it's not a straight line as right, uh, one nineteen runs. It's kind of an awkward situation, I don't wa, I don't know why they didn't lay it out, you know, as a straight line and having Ashby Road come in as a straight line. But um, so yeah, it is kind of the right-of-way of one nineteen and Ashby Road that it is touching.
So is it like a little triangle that's left and just the the corner touches one nineteen, it looks like on the map?
Yeah, I mean, uh, from where the uh, the Worcester County Highway bound in the wetland is, technically that is Ashby Road, I believe, and then from there, that um, angled line going up to the northeast, I believe that is technically one nineteen.
Okay. Dave? Yeah, I was waiting to see if anybody, anybody else got any questions or concerns I would like to ask um, ask Trevor. Um, the only uh, the only um, concern that I have was I had got, uh, there's some information that we got from the planning board. And um, although they don't object to us granting a special permit, there was some issues that the, there are running up the planning board's um, bylaws that are regarding the um, the street number there. Are you um, familiar with that, Trevor?
Um, I'm familiar with the street numbering process and that they have like a forty-foot rule, every forty feet it goes, it's supposed to go up uh, two numbers, something like that. But other than that, I I really don't know what they're referring to.
Okay, um, I don't want to make a planning board ruling, but what I would like to to ask you guys to do would be to comply with um, the planning board's request that the street number, it's a little bit unclear to me, but um, the the street number be acceptable to the planning board, because I, there's a um, there's a bylaw in the planning board that says that uh, the street number has to reflect the frontage of the lot that's being used as the frontage, if there's frontage on two different roads. Um, I I could be a little bit off base on that, but I would like you guys to check with the planning board to make sure that you're um, you're satisfying their requests about the street numbers is um, so that, but I don't know, I assume you would have a problem with that.
Yeah, I think, I mean, when we were originally doing this A and R, we were referring to all the lots as lot one, lot two, lot three, and then I think we, I thought we were just issued uh, street numbers, I don't know, Paul just told me to put these street numbers on there. So usually that means the planning board after the A and R went through, told us what the street numbers were going to be. But I guess we're going to have to clear that up with them.
Okay, yeah, that uh, other than that, that's really the only concern I have, the um, I I've got a letter from the um, Board of Health that they don't, they don't have any any comments other than the fact that a subject system permit has been issued, so other than that, I think, other than that and the planning board's um, request about street numbering, I think that those are the only, the only things that are, that are on here. Anybody else have any questions? Is there anybody else on the Zoom meeting besides the board?
Uh, David, uh, this is Walt Meisner. Uh, I'm on.
How you doing this evening?
I'm good. Um, I'm not here um, with regards to the planning board, uh, because I'm I'm here more as a private citizen, I want to make that clear. Because you're right, the planning board did consider this and did not offer any objections at the time. However, after learning a little bit more and thinking about it a little bit more, I am gonna, from a citizen's standpoint, point, I want to bring out some concerns with this whole proposal. First off, I remember quite distinctly when the three lots were divided up. And this lot here is not split between green business and business, it is a hundred percent in business. Um, the green business, while there, because of the way the green business bylaw is written, the board had no authority to object to the houses going on it, provided that the houses were in fact placed in the green district part of the house property. But this property or this lot is one hundred percent in the business district, as I understand it, and as we considered it at one of the board meetings there. Second of all, the business that is to be in the country store, the old country store, the lot abutting this lot is right now proposed to be a marijuana retail operation. And um, so there is, you know, we're talking about a proposal to put a house next to a marijuana retail operation. Um, it is also on the other side, it would be abutting another property that has a house. So I think that is of concern. And thirdly, what is, uh, you know, you you raised two issues at the beginning of this meeting in which you said it needs to um, not be in detriment to the bylaw. Well, the current bylaw is business, it's not residential. So it's clearly in opposition of the original zoning uh, zoning um, decision of the board, or of the, of the uh, it's in, it's clearly different than the current zoning of it. And the fact that it's next to another business, and that is at a major corner of one oh one and one nineteen, which is a prime location for a business location. I think it sort of flies in the face of, of um, flies in the face of 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 what is uh, you know, of why we have the zoning boards. If we can have a special permit for something like this, to change a business district to a residential property, then why do we have zoning at all? Would be my question. So as a, like I said, this is not a plan, I'm not here to talk from a planning board perspective. I'm just talking as a citizen of the town and the prominence of that corner, and the fact that it is going to be abutting what is likely to be a marijuana retail place. I think that the zoning board or ZBA needs to think long and hard about whether it thinks a special permit here is appropriate. And I have nothing else to say other than I wanted to go on record and and make sure the zoning board knew that uh, even though um, we had a uh, did not object to it as a planning board before, I personally, as a citizen, have ever, have reflected on it a little bit more, and I think it's of uh, of importance for your consideration. Thanks very much, Dave.
Well, certainly, does uh, anybody else um, on the board want to uh, address what Walt just had to say? Or there any, ever any feelings on his opinion about this?
So this plan from Graz Engineering clearly shows a portion of that lot in green business, so I don't know.
I guess speak a little bit to that, uh, if you want. Um, when this parcel was originally being subdivided, uh, Zoc surveyors did the uh, the original plan. And they had a zoning line that kind of came through. And it became an issue because the, someone on the planning board, I believe, um, kind of uh, said that it didn't look right uh, according to the zoning map. So then they uh, they basically went through and they were looking at everything and the line that was originally drawn was like based off of the color differentials from the business to the green business on the zoning map. Now, those weren't exactly correct. We dug up some old documentation from when the uh, the line was actually put into place. And I actually sent it to the the new building inspector as well to show her uh, kind of how we developed it. And it had distances off of the town line and then had, it was supposed to be a perpendicular rectangular area, nine hundred fifty feet from the, where the right-of-way of one nineteen meets the town line over along the right-of-way of one nineteen. And then, so we drew that line and then we offset it the four hundred fifty or five hundred feet, however wide it was, to get that rectangular area. And that's, it was kind of clearly defined in that older uh, documentation that the town was using when they created these zoning districts. And so that that's how we uh, came up with the geometry of the uh, zoning line.
So is it or is it not that lot at all in the green business zone?
As as we see it right now, the the smaller uh, triangle in the bottom left hand of the lot is green business, and the rest of the lot from probably, it's probably eighty percent of the lot is in the business. And then in the zoning bylaw, uh, in the uses of business, they clearly say that a residence can be constructed uh, with issuance of a special permit. And in in this case, I mean, if there is going to be a marijuana uh, place there, that's that's one thing, but the rest of the surrounding properties are all residential, so it's not going to be completely out of whack with what exists there. And if the the frontage is on a completely different road, it's not on one nineteen where this business district follows. And I think that was the intent of this zoning district was to get businesses to build along one nineteen rather than Ashby Road, because the rest of it is green business where residential is allowed. So that that's my takeaway from uh, from the boundary shown.
Thank you.
So, uh, so my, my question is, I guess it's on the, I'll call it the north side of the uh, the lot that goes at about a forty-five degree angle. That entire property line is along one nineteen?
Yes, it's a hundred and seventy-one point three feet from the Worcester County Highway band, uh, bound right near the culvert, all the way north to an iron pin found.
Okay. My question is, are we comfortable that we really understand what the the uh, various lot boundaries are between business and uh, between residential and green business? Uh, because I'm hearing two different things here, and I just want to make sure that whatever the board is making decision on, that it's clear as to which is what, because I'm not hearing that right now.
Okay, so um.
Information we got from Graz, it's a stamped um, plot plan from an engineer. I don't know if if that means anything or not, but I thought usually when the stamp is on there, that's that's what it is. I have no idea, but maybe somebody can answer that?
Uh, Walt, do you have any input on um, uh, on whether or not this is totally in the business district, or if it's partially in the, in the green business? Tristic is um, is Trevor is stating?
I do agree, whatever said in the sense that it was uh, unclear. Um, Graz Engineering works for the applicant. And uh, so therefore it hasn't been verified against anybody else's uh, numbers except for Graz Engineering's um, uh, opinion. But uh, for consider, when we made the approval of the three lots at that particular hearing, it was uh, the approval of the division three lots was that lot number one was entirely green district. Lot number two was probably about eighty percent green di, business and twenty percent um, business, and lot number three was entirely in green business, uh, in regular business. The only thing I would say is, the majority of this lot, regardless of where that line is, is clearly business. So it is a major decision on the ZBA's appoint, regardless of where that green business versus business line is, it's a major decision for you to decide that um, residential um, is appropriate uh, on that corner in what was previously zoned business. But uh, and I'm only sort of um, presenting that to the ZBA, because I think it's setting, quite frankly, a pretty dangerous precedent precedent, because if, in fact, you say we're going to allow a special permit on a business that is on what is now zoned business at the corner of one oh one and one nineteen, I think you're setting a precedent, if you, if you're going to say that's worthy of a special permit, then anything else in this town that is a business, zoned business could arguably be said, well, you gave, you gave this, uh, you made this lot um, residential, so why can't I get a special permit for the same thing? So I think the only reason why I jumped on tonight, Dave, and to your fellow uh, board members was because of my concern about the precedence that's being set here. Um, and it is regardless of whether there's a sliver of the property that is green business or not. Because most of the property and where this house will be, will be on a zone business section.
Okay, it's um, I could be mistaken, Walt, but it's been my understanding um, for uh, for a long time being on the zoning board, that the zoning board doesn't set precedences, that yeah, every hearing that we have is heard on its own merits. I imagine someone could bring up that as an argument, but that was what I was taught from a long time ago, that the zoning board does not set a precedent. We are um, we we hear each hearing on its own evidence and its own merits. Does uh, does anybody else on the board agree with me or disagree with me, or what's what's?
I was actually going to say that myself, because that was my understanding in the whatever twenty, twenty-five years I've been on the board, that zoning board does not set precedents.
Okay. Uh, I I had never heard that before, but any, any decision you make will, could be brought up by somebody as having set precedence. So you'd have to defend that, but but that's, I understand. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And Dave, if you want, uh, I could share my screen, I do have that document that shows the uh, the area of the, the original layout for this business zoning district being nine hundred fifty feet off.
Yeah, I'd like to see that, if you could.
Yeah. I will try to select this one. Everybody see it yet, or?
Yeah.
Okay, so this is right here, is Ashby Road coming up. And then this is one nineteen as it comes across. And then it has a notation right up to the uh, the town line where that meets the right-of-way over nine hundred and fifty feet to this point here. And it's a perfectly uh, parallel line with one nineteen, so that cuts across uh, the diagonal on this lot. And then the other business zone is on the north side, and that comes over a thousand feet and also is five hundred feet. So clearly, the intent was to have businesses develop on one nineteen. And uh, whereas this is going to be on Ashby Road, I think uh, residents would actually be more fitting there. Especially with the limited area on site.
Can you use that little hand thing that you have just to show us where you're, like, I feel like I know, but?
This is right where the house is going, pretty much.
Okay, okay.
Somewhere right in there.
Okay. And that white part that you've got your hand on right, well, you did, yeah, right there, what is that? Is that the green or is that?
This is all green business, I believe.
Okay, okay.
Unless, unless it originally was not green business, and then there was another document that expanded green business. I can look up the uh, zoning right now, just to verify.
So how far is the proposed uh, house going to, going to be in relativity to the uh, where the current country store is?
Uh, so the closest corner of the house is going to be about a hundred and sixty-one feet from the corner of that, the approximate location, I don't think we actually located it. But in a direct line, um, if they theoretically cut all the uh, log, or all the woods up to the area, from that point, there's about, there's about like sixty feet of woods before you even see the uh, depending on what kind of development they do, actually, if they put a parking lot, I mean, it might be different, but right in the backyard is is their septic system, so they can't really do much backyard over there.
Trevor, looking at the uh, engineering plan here, um, is that, they look like ferns or something, is that wetland in in the front corner?
Yeah, uh, from that Worcester County Highway bound, it goes down to an A fourteen label, I'm not sure if that's on the plan we submitted. But yeah, all that little, uh, the fern kind of line is all wetland inside there, it's just a little small, isolated. That actually runs.
That's on Ashby Road towards one nineteen, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, it flows through the culvert to the north, uh, just north of the Worcester County Highway bound to the uh, bigger swamp that's on the left-hand side of the road.
Uh, Dave, we did have Lee Shell that had some questions, she had lost connection, I believe she's back on, I don't know if she has any questions at this point.
I am back on, I was going to wait till you were taking public comments, if you're ready for that, I don't know what I missed, my internet just went off for a bit. But I'll wait till you take public comments, if you haven't done that yet.
No, we haven't done that yet, but we will um, we will shortly.
Yep.
I uh, I'm actually kind of reluctant to bring this up, but I think that I probably should, since it's on the current zoning map. What uh, uh, Trevor, is there any, is there any issues up there with the wetland or watershed protection district?
Um, I believe.
Like it to me.
No, I believe, um, I don't think the watershed protection district goes around that specifically, I think it's, I want to say it's twenty-five feet around all lakes within uh, within uh, Ashburnham, so Sunset Lake and everything like that has a minimum of a twenty-five foot buffer around it, and then actually that, that actually came up in a whole nother uh, project we were working on. Uh, that that line was drawn, we believe either twenty-five feet or if there was only one contour line going around it, if that extended past twenty-five feet, they kind of followed that line. It was really finicky the way they uh, developed that uh, watershed district, but I don't believe it's um, it's, there's any buffer around just a wetland. The wetland itself might, I'm not sure how it's defined, but it might be within the wetland protection district, but we're not affecting the wetlands in this, in this scenario, so.
Well, I agree with you a hundred percent that that wetlands protective district is it, it, the delineation of where the borders of that are, are next to impossible, if not impossible, to um, definitively say where they are, but I I don't want this to come up in an appeal somewhere, so that's why I brought that up at this point. Um, anybody else have any comments about that?
Nope.
Okay, good, I, that's not an issue, I'm, I'm glad it isn't, because it's a difficult issue to en, to enforce or to interpret for that matter.
Dave? Excuse me?
Yeah, Mrs. Shell had her hand.
Yeah, I, I don't want to break in at the wrong time, but that was one of the points I was going to bring up. Because as in a butter, I received a letter from the Conservation Commission that there has been a, a notice of intent to fill in some of that wetlands, which was supposed to be kind of tentatively scheduled to be taken up this past Monday. Kind of tentatively scheduled to be taken up this past Monday. But of course, it got moved till after the zoning board meeting, so I wanted to be sure that. You are aware of this letter and that this plan and how it would affect your decision.
That letter.
Trevor, Trevor, can I step in? Can I say your name? So I can for the.
Yes, Lorraine Cho.
S H E L L?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Trevor.
Thanks. Yeah, so that that letter, the the whole first part where it talks about fill or dredging wetlands. That's just a general header that all notifications typically have that we send out. Right below that, it says specifically. It says a construction of a single-family house within probably a hundred fifty or a hundred square feet of the wetland. That is specifically what we're doing. When it says fill and dredge wetlands, that's just a generic thing that. If you are doing something like that, you need to notify a butters and file a notice of intent. In this case, we have a clear boundary and it is going to be. I think we're staying about ten feet off of the wetlands with the silt fence proposed, and there won't be any work within that wetland area.
Can I just ask one question on that? Then I know it's not really my time to speak, but it also says.
All right, feel free. This is a public hearing.
Well, I know, but I know you like to wait till. But it also says that. A well to be installed thirty-four feet away from the wetland and the single-family home partially. Within the fifty-foot wetland buffer and this. Says this area is subject to protection under the Wetlands Protection Act.
If I if I could, that's when someone applies for a building permit. There's several sign-offs on the building permit that. The highway department has to sign off on at the planning board and the Conservation Commission. If there's any issues and they file a notice of intent, you're gonna have to put in there what they intend to do. To mitigate any runoff or erosion that could possibly adversely affect the wetlands. But the Conservation Commission is gonna have to sign off on that. And that's a that's a little bit beyond the scope of the zoning boards. Authority, but the Concom is is they're really on top of that stuff, so the permit. Won't be able to progress if it doesn't go through the Conservation Commission. And if the applicant doesn't go to a public hearing with the Concom, but if you're in a butter, you would be notified of that.
And that's what I was notified of. I have this letter. And let let me just give a little history of the timeline of this. I listened in on the planning board meeting on the fourteenth, I believe, April fourteenth. Where they didn't have any objections to the plan submitted for this lot as a single-family home. The next day I got this letter. So they, I don't know if they were aware of it, not aware of it, if it's anything they needed to consider. But on this letter, it said that the Conservation Commission had tentatively scheduled a hearing. For the night before last, which would have meant that they would have heard this. And maybe you would have heard something about it before this meeting. So my question, I guess mainly is. How this affects your decision, if at all?
Well, again, that would go into a a a different board's preview. That would go onto the Conservation Commission would look at that. On the same hand, the way that the installation or the design of the septic system would fall underneath the preview. The preview of the Board of Health. There's there's several different boards that are involved with with any lot, even if it's a single-family lot being developed. The planning board, the border health, the conservation commission, if there's wetlands. So it's not just the zoning board that hears this. That's gonna it has to go through several different boards. Before the permit is granted.
Is it something that you would consider or like to be able to consider in your decision? Or is it just kind of separate?
Well, mostly it's kind of it's kind of separate that. The zoning board tries not to make any, well, we can't make any rulings on wetlands because that's. That's the Conservation Commission's area. They do that. We wouldn't make any. Real comments on the installation of the septic system because that's what the Board of Health does. Besides the fact of saying that it would be redundant for us to say it, but we would say that. All of the boards that are concerned with this are obviously saying something and they have to be. They have to be approached and they have to get all necessary approvals from whatever board is the approving granting authority. Building within a hundred foot of a wetland would be the Conservation Commission's. There would be the approving authority on that issue, not us, as the same thing with the Board of Health. The septic system would be, they're the permit granting authority for that. The planning board is the permit granting authority of the whether or not it's an A and R lot. So there's different boards that have to put their input in.
And the order of it doesn't really matter that much.
I wouldn't say that it doesn't matter, but that's not within the scope of our approval.
Can I?
Thank you.
Oh, excuse, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to thank you.
Trevor, have have the other two lots sold?
I don't know if they've sold. I know one of them definitely has it because it's just a foundation. That's the one to the south. But the middle one is pretty close to being done last time I drove by it. But I'm not sure if the the owner has sold any of the lots yet.
Okay, I I guess. My concern is that this does border one nineteen and that is. The corner of Ashby Road and one nineteen, I would think would be almost the prime. Business area for somebody that would want to have a business. And I'm just wondering if the lot lines could almost be, and I don't know if this is asking too much. Be moved south, so to speak, so that we are still allowing that corner to be. Business developed if it would, if somebody would like to do that at some point in the future.
So you are you referring, how are you referring to the the lot line? Like you're talking about just separating the lots out, just strictly like.
I guess it'd be reducing the, I don't know how big this lot is. Is it two acres, an acre and a half or?
So the lot in question is thirty-three thousand square feet right now. And to get a three-family, a house with a with a septic system and a well on site together. You actually need at least thirty thousand, so you can't really reduce it much or else it's not even a building lot in terms of Title V.
Brother, did you say three family?
That's enough, three three-bedroom house, sorry, not three-family, three-bedroom. Because in Title V, it requires ten thousand square feet per bedroom in the house.
Don't the lots have, isn't this almost, I want to say out in the residential B area, I thought you needed sixty thousand square feet.
So in the, I believe in the business or I think, let's see, let me pull that up.
This business is twenty-five thousand square feet, green business is six.
Yeah, okay.
And then, so, and then sixty for an RB. Is what's needed. So this comes back to the whole thought about what exactly the, you know, given the way this thing. I I remember, I think the reason it was divided up this way was not cross. Taking a line and putting it across everything, it was taking individual lots to zone it. Because it gets, it would have gotten way too complicated if you just sliced everybody's properties right across the line. Because you'd have a lot that was two different things, which is what we're kind of experiencing here, so. I I I see what Bob is saying about this. I mean. It's it's a, it definitely is a tricky situation.
Yep, and all I have to say is to that, the the planning board approved this A and R. And, you know, they they determined that it met all the zoning requirements for for a lot. And, you know, thirty-three thousand, I think because the majority of it wasn't the business. They knew if, you know, anything was to be built on, it would have to be considered business. So I think that is why it went in with the area of a of a potential business lot. And we actually did try to make make a business work on on this lot. And there's just, there's just not a lot of area to to make something feasible that the applicant wanted to do work. And therefore he just felt it would be less impactful in the wetlands and, you know, just a better fit to be a residential. A residential lot instead of a a business. And I figured, I told him that, you know, with with the surrounding residential area. I mean, I I think it fits in very well here and I I didn't think it was gonna be a problem, but.
Okay, anybody else, any questions, concerns, anybody on the board of anything else that might ask, brother?
I don't.
I'm good.
Okay, you say you do, Terry, did you say you do or you you're good?
I don't.
Okay, sorry.
You got any other concerns, Rich, or do you like to ask about?
Sorry, I'm muting and I'm muting myself, so you don't hear the typing in the background. No, no, I'm I'm good.
Mark?
Not not at this time.
Bob?
Uh, no.
Is there any other comments from the general public?
Carl, you're 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 muted. You'll have to turn your microphone on.
Okay.
Yep.
You know, my only question is, it seems like the green business.
If you, excuse me, if you could speak your name clearly, so we could get that down.
My name is Carl Shell. And I'm one of the residents in the neighborhood.
Thank you.
And over the past, I don't know, since this whole thing started. The business, green business and business lot line is probably the third time it's been moved in all these meetings. Now, my original thought was it was always all green business. If that was the case, I think it was only enough room to put two residents on there. And they fought to get the business line moved over and it was moved over before. Now it seems to be moved back to where it was originally. Where we all thought it was, almost, but not quite, which seems kind of fishy to me.
Who is moving these lines?
The business lot ended at the lot of the store that is there right now. Which it looked like on the maps all the time. I didn't measure it, I don't know what. So where it was all green business before, there was only enough by by law, I guess, to only have two residential properties. Then the green business district, I moved all the way out to. I don't know, was the center of one oh one or something like that. And now it seems to be moved back. Where it was originally. But my question is, can we just move these lines or should we find out where they actually are?
Well, that's. That's a, that's a good question.
It seems to me like it's just been done this way just to get the third lot out of an area that really was only zoned for two lots.
Who is moving these lines? You you said something about moving the lines.
The planning board meeting, it was one spot, then they came on and said it was all the way out to the middle of one nineteen, one oh one. Now it's moved back to almost where it was originally in the first meeting.
Trevor, do you know where your source came from?
I know, I know when we, there was an issue with the zoning line. Because the the original plan that we found after Zoc had done it. Some questions were raised about it and they did some digging on it. And it was determined, I think with the help of a couple of people in the planning office there. Digging up the old zoning records from when this line was put into place. And that's when we actually finally got a, because like I said, before we found that document, it the line was drawn. Just based off of the the zoning map that you see online, I believe, is my understanding of it. And until the question was raised and then the. People on the the planning office there got us that original document from the original map from, I I forget. When it was actually put into place. That's when we actually finally had a dimension from the town line that we could verify because we surveyed it. We got all the way out to the right of way and we could take it that nine hundred fifty feet over and then offset it five hundred feet off of one nineteen. So as until we find further evidence, this is where the original intent of the that zoning district was supposed to go.
Did that answer your question or?
Yeah, yes, I mean.
Well, this has been going on for so long now, but if you, I have some of these maps still here from the original plans. When we were gonna have a trailer park up in the field, you look at that map and the business line goes kind of right along the country store marker. Then at one point, the back end of that five hundred feet of the business line, I believe it was in the next plan. For the hotel, the original motel or whatever he wanted to put there. And somehow, that back end running parallel to one nineteen. Went straight out to one oh one, like much further than you see it on the map you're looking at now, straight out. If you went straight across the back of that, all the way out to one oh one, almost to the intersection of Ridge Turnpike. On one map, it shows that. And the other maps that we've seen since then, the line crosses. One oh one going toward one nineteen. It actually kind of crossed one oh one, which isn't shown on what we're looking at now. So I think back when this all started, we were all looking at that green map that you showed. And just as a little historical fact, since I've been in this area for most of my seventy-plus years. I kind of thought that the business areas were outlined because at one time, the. There was a restaurant on the other side of the street and at one time where Hancock's residence is, there was. Haberberg's Gas Station and Store, which would have been businesses. So I kind of just thought that that's why that particular little spots are shown as business areas. Next, I have no proof of that, but that was just my thought.
Okay, I I've just did a little digging on the the prior documents from the time we've been involved in this. And so I think that originally, everybody was going off of the actual zoning map. That was indicated online and it looks like the green business comes down perpendicular to one nineteen. It almost looks like in within the green business, the entirety of the lot should be in green business. I think originally, that's what everybody thought the intent was, because it's kind of in the shape of the lot before it was subdivided. And then when it got subdivided by Zoc surveyors, he did the survey for it. He did some digging and he found out that it was a five hundred foot offset from one nineteen. So he took it with that little prismatic shape that comes down to the Worcester County highway bound. He went from that bound down five hundred feet down the right of way of one oh one. And he held that line and then he brought that across, I guess, something like that.
Yeah, something very strange, yeah.
Yeah, and then when it went to the planning board and everything like that, somebody raised the question, like, hey, this doesn't really seem right. And so we did some digging and that's when we did the digging and we found out the dimensions from the original intent of that zoning district. And that's what you see reflected on the the plan that we got.
Could could we find out, could we talk to somebody from Zoc Engineering to? Find their determination on what they had for lot lines?
I mean, I I you're talking about me me contacting him or?
Our board, David, or I'm just thinking, just so we can. If we're gonna be making a decision so that we're informed on what decision we are making and where this line is. As it seems to be in question right now.
Yeah, situations like this where the exact lot lines or the zoning lines are come up. Yeah, situations like this where the exact lot lines or the zoning lines are come up more frequently than I'd than I'd like to see, but there was instance, not that, not that far long ago where Brian Zoc Jr. Had a certified plot plan. And the neighbor had a certified plot plan from Brian Zoc Senior. And they both showed the lot line in a different place. That was a father and son from the same company. So it's where currently working on redoing all of our zoning bylaws in our zoning maps. So that it's much more definitive that this is where the lot line is. It's um, it it's kind of like asking somebody, you know, what time it is. I'll say it's 6:45, you'll say it's 6:46. It's unfortunately, two people don't come up with the exact same lot, all lot line all the time. And then that goes to say with the zoning districts as well. I don't know what the answer is to that, except for the fact that we're working on it. We've hired a company. The town has hired a company to the the define where all of those lots are, but right now we have to use our best, our best judgment as to what we, as to where we believe the lots are and and what's most current. Again, that's not an exact science. We just got to use our best judgment on it.
Right, but as residents here and abutters who have gone, like I said, from Trail Park, this is the original plan of the Trail Park done by Graz Engineering. You can't see what I'm showing you probably very well, but here's the country store and here's the line right beside. And that's all you have to look at that and then look at the next plan and see how it changed from that and then look at this plan and see how it's changing again and it's just kind of one of the issues that we've been dealing with for about two years now.
So Trevor, if I if I could ask you a question, if I understand it correctly, that first lot line that she's referring to, once you did further looking into it, you determined it a little bit more accurately, is that, is that what you're saying?
The the zoning line or?
Yeah, the zoning line.
Yeah, so the the zoning line, as as soon as we, that it got raised in that planning board meeting, the, they worked with the planning board to look up the old document. That document that I showed you with the 950 foot length from the from the town line. And that was from 1971. That was the creation of that business district. And that's when it was agreed upon, or I I wasn't in the meeting, but I, the the A and R passed. So I'm guessing it was agreed upon by the planning board that that would be the location of the 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 business line there.
David?
Yeah.
This is Walt Meisner again. I signed off on that A and R and my recollection may not be recalling correctly, but my recollection is at the time we signed off at the A and R, the majority, all lot one was in green business, the majority of lot two was in green business. And lot three, which is under consideration now, was entirely in business. If the green business line moves over a little bit to say part of this lot as they proposed it is in green business, I really think it's irrelevant to interaction tonight. Because the bottom line is the majority of this lot is in business. And what the ZBA needs to act on is whether this is, whether you're going to allow a residential property or residential structure to be in residential use, to be put into, onto a lot that the majority of it is business. I will tell you that I, one of the areas of concern, because I have with the with the green business bylaw is that there is in conflict. That is one of the bylaws that is under, will be under consideration for changing. But that's, we at the time could not deny a residence to go in green business. But if you read the green business bylaw, it's not the intent of the green business bylaw to have residential property there. It's the last clause allows residential property to be in green business. And the applicant took advantage of that and has put two houses on that and we were not in a position, or the town was not in a position to object to it because of our bylaws. But this particular proposal is the majority of the property is in business and it's the applicant is essentially asking to put a residential property in business. And I think the ZBA has to decide if they think that is acceptable or not. I'm now of the opinion that it's it's that's a lot that we should want to remain business, but but that's one person with one opinion.
Thank you, Walt. I believe that, actually, I think there's two members on the zoning board now that were on the committee that rezoned that as green business. I think Bob Fichtel was on that committee and I think Mark Carlisle was too. If maybe both of you or one of you would like to maybe give us a, shed a little bit of light on what the intent of the bylaw was and why you wrote it in in such a way that residence was allowed in the green business, that that may be helpful to some concerned citizens and other members of the board as to what the intent of that bylaw was. Maybe you could shed some light on that, Mark?
Uh, yeah, I mean, then Bob can can, you know, either correct me or agree. I think the reason we ended up doing that was because there were already existing residences in the area. And the idea was to take 119 because of what Tadic and other, the Ashburnham State Forest and all that other kind of thing was in the area that we felt that we had to leave that area. We wanted to look at business because that section was business, but also a green business, opening up other opportunities for business down there, but realizing there was already residences in the area. So we tried to kind of bridge between, you know, both sides of the fence, as it were. And that's how we get it up there. I mean, Bob, oh, oh, is that pretty much what you remember or?
Exactly. That's what I was going to say. I concur. It was just that there were, there were already residences along that area and it was tried to or just say meld them both.
Yeah, so I guess my concern here in all of this and is that, do we know? I think what would make it a lot easier is to see the piece of land and have it shadowed where green business is, where business is, and exactly where the house fits in all of this. Because I'm hearing so much kind of different. I I, to me, this thing is as clear as mud. I, it seems like there's, I I, doesn't seem like it's definitive exactly as between green business, business and the, where the residence is and and everything else. And maybe I'm missing all that, but I think, I think this is a lot more, you know, I I just don't think it's, it's it's totally clear on this. And it's a unique situation. We've run into into these kind of situations before where you're bridging between a couple of districts. And if I remember right, and Bob, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think as I mentioned earlier, we didn't put a line across it. We were taking parcels because it was a lot easier because you could have a parcel that could be one zoning area and then split into two or, you know, into two. So the idea was to just make it one to try to simplify. But as much as you try to simplify everything, it 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 doesn't always work out that way.
To the best of your recollection, Mark, excuse me for, Bob, to the best of your recollection, then what the intent of the bylaw was to allow businesses and residents in the same area, in the same zoning area, that if a, if a resident seemed to be the right fit for it, that would be allowed with a special permit, or if a business seemed the right fit for it, that would be allowed as well as that.
Yeah, I think it's a, I think that that the term would be mixed use. And it was, in some respects, it was to try to simplify everything up in that area to real, to recognize his business and recognize his residential. Bob, did you have something you want to?
Yeah, I'm just, to be honest, I I'm perplexed that we didn't just, or that the business district doesn't just run down Ashby Road. You know.
Yeah, but that was then and here is now.
Is that your recollection, Bob, that what you, that the intent of the bylaw that you guys were writing was to allow eat a business or a residential house? I mean, what I'm trying to do is determine whether or not allowing a residential home in there, would that be construed as a, as a degradating from the intent of the bylaw? Or when you wrote the bylaw, were you intending there could be either or?
Well, we wanted a place that we could the whole, that corridor of 119, it was the intent to have a place where we could encourage, we'll call it green businesses, whether it was a bicycle shop, a kayaking company, maybe a campground. You know, things along those lines is what we were hoping to attract to the area. So I want to say, I, as far as I can recall, the main aim of it was to get green businesses in there.
I'd agree with that.
Okay, but a residential structure wasn't out of the question and.
No, but it was more, it was more, definitely was more geared to business as a primary and the secondary was residential.
Okay, well, we're we're lucky to have a couple of board members that were there writing this.
I don't know how lucky, I don't know how lucky we are, but.
Well, nine times out of 10, we're looking at a zoning bylaw that was written in the 70s and the people.
Yeah, that's true. No, we're, Bob and I are still around, so that's a good.
What did they intend this to mean? Now I've got someone.
Yeah, but that, but I think I, Bob and I are on the same page on this and I think that's pretty much the way it landed.
Okay, well, let let me run this by by everybody and throw this idea out there. There seems to be a lot of question about exactly where the lot lines are for the different zoning districts. Do we feel as though it would be prudent to continue this so that we can look into this further or do you think that it's defined enough that we could move ahead? I just want to get a general feeling from the board what they're feeling, because if we are feeling as though we need to look at this further, let's cut to the chase and continue it for a couple of weeks. What's?
I would be more comfortable if we continue this, because I think there's, there's right, wrong, and different. I don't think we have a good enough grasp on this. What I'd like to see is what I said earlier. I'd like to see the lot, the delineations between business, green business in that area and exactly where it's going to fall, the residence is going to fall. Because I just kind of feel like I, we're we're missing some pieces.
What's the rest of the board's feelings on that? Rich?
Uh, I I'm good either way. Yeah, I'm going to side with whatever, like, personally, I feel like I can make my decision now, but I wouldn't mind having that extra information, but whatever everybody feels comfortable with.
Okay, Bob, what do you feel about this?
I I'm going along with Mark. I'd like to get a little more information, I think, on where these boundaries are, if we could try and nail that down.
Okay, uh, Terry, what's your feelings about that?
Well, I thought Trevor had came back and found the original maps that delineated the 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 feet and what have you from certain bounds and specific bounds. I I thought that that was the gospel on on all of this, whereas where this other stuff had come from, I don't know, but he 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 claims to have got the original map or whatever it is that he mentioned. So are we just going to end up with what he just showed us?
We might, Terry, we might, but we might end up somewhere else. I don't know. I don't know.
My my feeling is I, I kind of agree with Rich. I could go, go either way. I agree with Rich and I agree with Terry also. The lot lines look pretty definitive to me for what I'm looking at, but certainly if there's other board members that want some more time to study this and get some more information, I'm not against that either. So um, I, I mean, we're not, you know, going to continue it into next fall, that's for sure, but it would be, I mean, if you, if you wanted to make a motion, Mark, or Bob, if you wanted to make a motion that we continue the hearing for a couple of weeks so that we can study these maps a little bit closer. We can.
Dave, would it be possible for him to state out roughly where he wants to put the house?
Yeah, I I could do that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it would just, you know, sometimes you can look at maps all day long, but if you put it there, then we can get the scope of where it is in relation to 119, 101, to the store, to whatever, to the other house, whatever. Uh, you know, not exactly, but somewhere in the ballpark. I think, I just think it would be, it would be something that I think would be useful for everybody.
Okay, and I I know you said you kind of wanted to see a map with the lots more clear, or the the lines more clearly defined. Is there anything I can drop for you to make it more clear or?
Yeah, yeah, I just, I I guess I I just, I know where you're talking. I know the land. I mean, there was a vegetable stand up in that area from Donnie Hanish and, and so just having that, I mean, it's, it is, it's one of those lots that kind of falls in between, you know, two different worlds. So just something along those lines. I know it's a bit of a process, but I think, I think would make it a lot easier for us to make a decision if we kind of have an idea exactly where that fell. So even just a rough staking, even if it's one stake saying this is the center of the house and whatever, just so we can just get a better bearing on it.
Okay.
Could we have 119 included in this drawing? That's, I guess, the one question that I have.
Yeah, I I could revise a drawing showing the the entire intersection of 101 and 119, so that's a little bit more clear. If that would help. I I got the A and R plan. Does the A and R plan show? It it doesn't, it shows a little bit more, but it doesn't show the actual, the parallel lines of 119, but does show that entire prismatic shape.
Trevor, let me ask you this. Let's assume for the sake of argument, a motion was made and seconded and we voted on it to continue the hearing. If that happened, would two weeks be enough time for you? I mean, I don't want to drag this on forever, but if that's not going to be enough time for you, would you, would you need three weeks to redraw something that would make things a little bit clearer for the for the rest of the board or?
No, I could, I could whip something up in 15, 20 minutes doing that. That's, that's nothing. That's just zooming out a little bit and just giving you guys a little bit more context, that's all.
All right, we'll wait.
15 or 20 minutes.
Very patient.
I mean, adjourn until nine o'clock. Come back in 15 minutes.
Right, so Dave, if we went to the the 12th of May is two weeks.
My calendar's on my phone.
Yeah, I, that would work for me, but the first thing we got to do is have a motion and it's got to be seconded. We got to vote on whether or not we want to continue the hearing.
Okay, so I'll go ahead and make the motion that we continue this hearing until May 12th so that we can have a little bit more information to make our decision.
Can I just, can we eject it real quick? The the 12th is actually going to be the same exact date as a conservation commission. I don't know if you guys want to go after that or it doesn't matter. But I I just wanted to point that out. Oh, actually, no, I'm wrong. Sorry. I was looking at April. I was looking at April.
No, no, they're a different day typically, yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, that's okay.
Okay, is there a second on that? Richard, can I just ask, so what?
Bridget, can I just, I'm gonna ask, so what are we?
A little more clarity.
Might have, yeah, I, well, in what? So what, what are you gonna?
I want to have a better idea, as Bob mentioned, on one nineteen, one oh one, that corner and the, and where. The proposed house is in relation to everything.
For what purpose? I mean, break it down for me like a real dummy.
My purpose would be, uh, Rich, is that if it, if that, if it's all in the green business, then it should just be probably two houses that are allowed there. If it falls within the business district, then the third house is allowed.
Yeah, and the difference.
Finding out where that is, and, and as Mrs. Shaw was saying, that in the original plan, I think, that was first presented. It was showing this all to be in the green business area and two houses were allowed, and now it's showing that. It's in the business district, so the lot size has now been reduced and three houses can fit.
Right.
And right, so, but my question is, is that we're only, we're only voting on a single house.
No, no.
Should the other two houses?
To Bob's point.
Down the road?
But to Bob's point. If you take the business district, it's thirty-five thousand square feet. Not, sorry, yeah, that's correct. Green business is sixty. So I want to make sure, like Bob, I want to see a delineation where it shows. How much is this? How much is what involved in this lot? Is it all in green business? Is it partially in business? Is it half and half? This is what we want to know, because there's a twenty-five thousand square foot difference between what you're allowed and what you're not.
Right, but that's not what we're, but I, I don't think, is that what we're talking about tonight, though? We're talking about a single house. That's only, they have to deal with that.
That, that you can build a single house in a business di- district at thirty-five thousand square feet. Versus sixty thousand. That's the issue.
Twenty-five.
Twenty, uh, sorry, twenty-five, is it twenty-five? I just put it away. Twenty-five and sixty?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, twenty-five and sixty, so.
But irregardless, this special permit is what is for a single house.
But we've got to ascertain is that.
With that later.
Yeah, no.
Like, they may be making a big mistake by doing this right now. But that's on them, right?
No, no, what we're, what we're trying to find out is, you're right, on business is twenty-five thousand square feet, green, green business is sixty. We, what I would like to see is this portion of the lot. Something that's like green and then something that's regular, whatever, that shows. How much is involved with each one of these districts? Because each one of these districts is very different on what is allowed in on a square footage for that lot.
And how much square footage is this lot?
You said, what was it, Trevor? You said thirty?
Thirty-three thousand.
Thirty-three, so you either twenty-five or you're sixty. So one makes it, one doesn't, and that's what we're trying to.
Which is why this special permit is needed.
Yeah, can I just make, I make a, uh, just a point that might clear things up? Um, uh, if, if the planning board approves an A and R, that says right then and there that the lot meets zoning requirements, correct?
Well, then, what's, what's, what's a special permit for then?
The special permit is for, uh, erecting a single family house within a business district. Because this lot was approved as a business lot only containing three, thirty-three thousand square feet. Therefore, a special permit is needed for construction of a single family residence in business. If it was considered green business, like the other two lots, we wouldn't need a special permit, because us residents can be constructed by right.
Right, so you're, you're saying none of this falls in the green bu- business district? Is that what you're saying?
Part, part of it does.
No, no, but you're saying there is part of it is in green business. Is that what you're saying? Okay, in there lies the issue. So to me, we're in the green business, we're in business. So it's up to us to figure out what is the square footage requirement for that area. And by having you go through that, that'll help clarify.
What, what are the sizes of the other two lots, Trevor?
The other two were, were, uh, considered, they were the majority green business, so those were kept at sixty thousand square feet with, and change.
All right, thank you.
I can, um, I, I can understand Mark's opinion about this, and I, it, and I agree with the veteran informed you are, the better decision you can make. And if Mark and Bob both believe that they would want some more information to make a more informed decision. Uh, I'm not going to disagree with them on that. Um, you know, we're not going months ahead here. It's only a couple of weeks. So I, I, I can understand the train of thought would, would look at it this, I mean, if it was totally in the green business, the zoning board. Could always have a finding that no zoning action was required.
Correct.
Would need a special permit.
Or if it was the other date, if it was all in business, that would be the same deal.
Yeah.
But we got a lot here that's got both, and it, uh, all we're looking for here is, it's two weeks. To be able to find out for clarification exactly what it is. Because now we got both.
Okay, so. Tell me, tell me each extreme of the, of the information that you could get. So I, I'm, I'm just, maybe I'm not following at all, but. So if we get information that it's. Not a lot of square feet, or if we get a lot of information that there is a lot of square feet. What does that information?
It's one of the two. If it's in green business, it's sixty thousand square feet. If it's in business, it's twenty-five. And we have.
But we know it's in both, that.
That is, that is correct, but I think it's important to be able to find out as to what, is it fifty percent green business? Is it fifty percent business?
I could tell you that right now, if you want. I'll just draw a line.
I mean, I don't disagree that more information's good. I just don't think there's any more information that's going to be gathered that we can't figure out right now.
Roughly forty, forty-three hundred square feet fall within the green business. The rest is business, so you're talking about, um. Just about twenty-nine thousand square feet a lot is, uh, considered business.
And so are we debating whether that number is accurate, Mark? Is, like, that's why you need the extra time?
No, I just, well, first of all, I didn't have that information before. I, I don't know why we have a gun to our head on this. I would just like to.
We don't, but I, we can wrap it up, like.
Well, I know, but there's also. Do you have a date on two weeks from now or something?
I just, I feel like we, we.
No, no, I, I.
We often make these, um, we, we are in a habit of extending these things for.
No, we're not. I disagree. I respectfully disagree.
Well, that's, that's.
We don't, we, nine times out of ten, nine times out of ten, we make a decision that night. And this is one that's very unique, that crosses two different business districts, that somebody wants to put a residence. I just think that in two weeks' time, it's better to just have, uh, you know, a little more information to make an.
Like what, though? We just got that information that you're asking for.
Well, have we had that all?
What more information do you want?
Well.
That, that's seriously my only concern.
I want to see roughly where the house is going, you know, it's within our scope and our rights to say. I want to see where the house is going on that lot. It's with perfect, perfectly within the purview. I'm one, one man out of a five-man board, and if the other four people say it's not necessary, then you know what? That's democracy.
I think Loreen has a question. Dave?
Yeah, yeah, um. Another thing that I'm still a little unclear on, and this has been brought up before, is that little triangular piece that goes. Now from one oh one on that angle to one nineteen. And I think we brought up before whether there is access from one nineteen to that specific lot. Because if not, then the only access to that lot is off of one oh one. I don't know what kind of difference that might make, but, um. If you're talking about one nineteen being business. Whether you'd be able to get to that lot right off of one nineteen, I'm unsure of that. I always thought the triangular piece was presently owned by the state.
Yeah, I believe you're correct in that. I think it is included within the right of way of, uh, one nineteen. So, but the weird thing is that, that little triangle piece, it almost faces one oh one as it intersects.
Well, it does. It's, it's on both. It's actually on both, so it is weird, but if it stayed owned and the state decides, like I've seen piles of things. You know, like chips or sand or stuff, if they decide they're going to put that there, and you're counting on that as access to that lot, then what kind of, um. Mess does that leave, if it does?
Yeah, and right now, the, the access is coming from, uh, one oh one, not, not.
Yeah, that's what I thought, that's what I always understood, so that's why I wanted to bring that up. I wasn't sure whether access could be from one nineteen or not.
Yeah, I'm not sure about that.
I'm still not really sure, so.
My, um, uh, my other question would be too, this is kind of a unique situation, because this is. One lot that clearly has two different zoning districts in it. Which is something we very rarely dealt with before. So where there's two different zoning districts. And there's different square footages for zoning district, which zoning district do we go to? Do we go with the one where the house is, or because they're using the other zoning district as a combination to get the square footage they need? Um, I, I, I'm tending to agree with Mark and Bob that. It, it, it probably wouldn't be a bad idea to study this a little bit more and get some more information. At least that's, that's my opinion about it. We're not, you know, this isn't, you know, the tenth time we've continued it, and we're not haggling over a small issue. I'd, uh, I would like to ask the question, what happens if a building lot is in two separate districts? And each one of those districts has a different square footage requirement? I don't think that that's. An unreasonable question to ask.
So, to get back to square one, we had, I had a motion on the table. Bob, did you second that, or?
I'll, I'll second it now, yeah.
Oh, I thought I remember you had already.
I thought that was.
Yeah, nobody has.
Okay, before we put this to a vote, it's, uh, the ready board discussion.
I, wait, I need Mark to, uh, Mark makes.
What would you like, Rich?
Like to finish this tonight. Uh, Mark makes a motion to, well, who's your bourbon? I'm sorry, Mark.
Don't apologize, Rich. I make a motion that we continue the hearing until, uh, May twelfth, six thirty, we'll say. Uh, to look for a little more information concerning the decision. You can use that.
And do you want to be specific on what information you want, Mark?
Well, I mean, it's regarding, uh, I mean, uh, uh. David pretty much summed it up, you know, if you want to get into more of the consequences of, of, um, zone, uh. Of between business and green business as far as square footage requir- requirements, given that they're two different bus- uh, districts.
Yeah. What it appears to be, Rich, is, is that, um, they're using the square footage of the green business district. Adding it to the business zoning district to get the necessary square footage for one home. I'm, I, I'm kind of curious about the ramifications of that, when you're taking two distinct, different zoning districts. Adding the square footage together to get enough square footage to build a home on it. When one of the districts is twenty-five thousand square feet and the other one is sixty. Um, that would be my biggest question that I would like answered. This is a unique situation, and I'd. Like to look at it a little bit closer.
No, that's a good point, Dave.
One of the districts is automatically allowed. Correct?
Well, allowed with a special permit, yes.
Right, allow with this.
Yeah.
No, in the green business, it's, it's allowed.
In the green, it's loud.
Right, but Dave brought up a good point. One is.
Square feet, he's got twenty-nine, and he needs a special permit, and I thought that's what we're here for.
No, but I'm, I'm saying if, if you could still include this, the, uh, Dave brought up a great point. I mean, can you still include? One district into the other to make the lot? Being, meeting the square footage.
Well, according to Trevor with the, the A and R, through the planning board that was approved.
The A, yeah, the planning board is the planning board, the zoning board is the zoning board. Two different entities.
So my, I guess my question would be is, if, uh, the planning board, uh, approves a lot. And say, I, I don't know how I want to word it. So you, you guys have enforceability of what's built on a lot, regardless of what the planning board decides?
The planning board gave their, their decision based upon their criteria. Our criteria is different when it comes to square footage and between two different, uh, districts.
But it, it, don't they have to?
I mean, if they, if they have the.
Lot based on, based on zoning requirements, which would include lot area?
Well, you know what? If that was the case, then we would, you wouldn't be here tonight with us. If they had the sole discretion as to saying it's allowed it or not.
But the, the thing is, if the, if the planning board saw this as, all right, we're going to approve this lot with this little frontage. Because we're going to consider a business lot. Then when we come in for a special permit with you, I figured that we were looking at this as a business lot. The house is in the business, uh, in the business, uh, district. Everything's, most of the, what's happening here is within the business district. So I, I guess my question is, so if, if the planning board makes a decision about a lot being approved, you, do you guys have the authority to reverse that approval?
Well, I, we have authority to do whatever on, on a special permit. But I, it's, again, it's two different protocols for making decisions based upon each, uh, each board's, uh, criteria.
Okay.
So, you know, I, I, I don't want to be the troublemaker in all of this. I just want to make sure that there are concerns that are from a butters. There are concerns, we, I, I don't remember, and Dave, you probably, and Terry might remember. But I don't remember seeing anything that's split up between two districts that are in, on one lot. So we just, you know, in my opinion, we want to do the necessary due diligence to make the right decision. And by waiting two weeks and asking a few more questions, I think it's in everybody's best interest to do that.
Which I agree too, but I want to know what those questions are, because I don't, I think we can get those answered. Like, I, I, I can't wrap my head around what those questions are that you want answered before.
Let me try to explain it to you again.
Please.
Okay, we have one law, we have one building lot in question here that we're looking at. That particular building lot has two different zoning districts in it. So what you're taking for one zoning district, it, it's twenty-five thousand square feet to allow a building lot. The other zoning district is sixty thousand. So those are radically different numbers. So what's happening is, is that the combination of the square footage of the green business and the business zoning district are being combined. To add one number, and. I've never run into this before, and I've been on the board for thirty years. I've never been on it before where somebody wanted to do anything, whether it's build a house or run a business. When the said law is clearly in two different zoning districts.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, is I get this, I get the problem. I totally get the, I understand the problem that you just explained. I don't get who you're going to ask a question to and what those questions are to answer that or fix that problem.
Well, I would guess, uh, off the bat, if I can't come up with a satisfactory answer on my own by doing my own research, would be, um, town council.
Okay, so that, yeah, if we mentioned, you know, we have to go to town council. I would have stopped, I would have shut up twenty minutes ago.
Geez, I wish I had said it.
Zip it, Mark, but. But, I mean, are we really going to go, are we going to town council for this? Because I feel like that.
I think we need to. I think we need to. I really do.
Okay, all right, then, then I understand if that's what you're saying.
No, no, we want to make.
But if this is a question for us, I don't think that we could come up with any, I don't think there's any questions that we could answer. Or any, like, I feel like this is our problem. We need to figure it out, and I don't think two weeks is going to help us figure it out. And it is an issue, we know what the issue is, and we can deal with that issue. But if you're saying this is a legal issue that we need town council, then I get it. But if this is something that we're not going to ask town council.
We're not doing this to stall anybody off here. It's to make an educated decision, in my opinion.
Right, but I want to know where the education's coming from, and if you say it's coming from town council, then I'm.
I think inevitably.
You're saying it's just time, time's not going to help this.
I wouldn't do that.
That's, that's what I'm saying, Rich. I'm going to call Devon tomorrow.
Then, then I understand. Okay. All right, then I understand.
Okay, are we, are we done debating this? Okay, are we are we done debating this? We ready to vote yet? We have.
Wait, we have a motion and then we have Bob second, right?
Yes.
Okay, sorry, second. Okay.
Is there any other comment? Terry, you got anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Bob, Mark?
Good.
No.
Terry, you think we need town council, Terry? That's my one comment.
I was ready to go.
Okay.
Okay, let's put it to a vote. Well, because we're doing this in a Zoom meeting, we don't have to do it a roll call type of thing. I my vote is yes to continue the hearing for two weeks. Mark?
Yeah, Mark, yes.
Terry?
Yeah.
Bob?
Yes.
Rich?
No, I'm ready to go.
Okay, so that's four in favor. One again, so the motion carries. We'll continue this until May twelfth. Trevor, do you have any specific questions on on what it is the board's looking for 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 May twelfth? I just want to make sure that that you get all the information we need for May twelfth.
Yeah, so I assuming that I'll get out there. Is there any date that you want me to have that stakeout there by Mark or?
Whatever works for you.
Okay, we'll plan on doing it sometime. It won't take long. I mean, that's like a fifteen minute stop. So if we're going by or something like that next week, we'll try to get it in.
Yeah, so you say a week from Friday or something.
Yeah, yeah, we'll do it sometime next week.
Okay, so we'll, yeah, that'd be great.
Okay, and then, yeah, and then in regard to the split lots, I know there's like legal jargon that Paul, you know, he has the property survey or legal legality stuff, so he knows a lot more about that as well. And so he'll be back from vacation tomorrow, so he could probably give you more information on split lots than I can. And the only other question I had was, when you guys get advised by town council, will we get some notes on what he's thinking prior to the meeting or?
Well, nothing against Debbie, but typically she doesn't give us her notes until ten minutes before meeting. But if I could get them earlier from her, I I will certainly forward those to you.
Okay.
And I will try to do that. I will tell her we have a continuation for two weeks, and if she could possibly get us the info as early as possible, that would be great.
Tell her one week.
So so just to that point, the and and help me remember this, maybe Bob remembers this. Bob, do we take like a certain amount of footage off of like one nineteen, like two hundred feet or whatever? And then it was just kind of a broad brush across lots?
Exactly. So it it actually would bisect lot lines. In other words, if you had a cigarette lot that went very deep, it may cut that lot in half.
So was that was that two hundred feet? I'll have to look at the map.
I'm not, yeah, I don't have that.
Yeah, no, it might be interesting to know how far where that fell off of there, but okay, yeah, I thought it was something like that. So, okay.
So Trevor, you're going to put on paper showing one nineteen and one oh one in this lot and the lot beside it or whatever they're looking for.
Yeah, I I can draft that up and I could show the I could show kind of what that old map in nineteen seventy-one was showing, the nine hundred fifty feet length, the five hundred feet offset from one nineteen, just so that's clear and our math is shown on there, just to make that as clear as possible. Anybody has any other things that they would like?
Trevor, could you could you just take the setback on the and I'll have to look it up. It's in the zoning bylaw. I think it may be two hundred feet, two hundred foot, whatever it is, setback to just cross. So we have a line delineation across.
For the business district or?
Pardon?
For the business district you're talking about?
Uh, well, from that, well, that would have been, yeah, I guess that would be that would be the the.
The business offset's five hundred feet.
Okay, five hundred and then the the green business was two hundred or something, right?
I think the green business went way further than that.
Oh, is it? I have to look it up. If you could just do those delineations between the two, that would make things a lot easier and clearer.
Yeah, it looks like the green business goes about two thousand feet on each side of one nineteen.
Oh, wow. Okay.
Trevor, what Trevor, just what's the total square footage of of this lot right now, both the lot combined?
So the lot or the the whole subdivided parcel you're talking?
Yeah.
Well, our lot right now is thirty-three one oh one, exactly.
And that's and that's the business zone and the green business zone combined?
That's combined, yeah. And now you want just the green business?
Yeah, okay, why not?
All right, I erased my triangle I drew earlier. Just a sec.
I think it was forty-three something.
Yeah, yeah, forty-three hundred, almost exactly. In the green business and then the remainder, which would be forty-three.
Three one oh one.
Yeah, I got to calculate.
Forty-three.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-eight, twenty-eight, eight oh one.
And that's all in the business.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, great.
Okay, so we we all set with this. We closed this hearing. Is anybody else?
We continue that. We continue.
We're not closing it, we're continuing.
Continuing, correct.
Same, Trevor, if you can get that information beforehand, so we can see it before the night of the meeting, that'd be appreciated.
Yeah, I'll work on that tomorrow. It looks like it's going to be a rainy day, so.
Okay, thank you. Great. I do appreciate it. I'm not trying to make things overly difficult. I just want.
I will try to get Debbie's opinion about it as well as early as I possibly can before our next before the continuation. All right. Anybody else got anything they want to add to this?
Good.
Okay, we we continue this hearing. Thanks very much, Trevor, for all your info and looking forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks. Do you guys want to hang around and go over minutes or anything?
Yeah, we have one. What do we have? One set of minutes?
Yeah.
Yeah, why don't we get that out of the way?
Okay, sounds good to me.
Dave, there was just one correction on those minutes that Bob had pointed out, right?
Yeah, these are the minutes of July first. Is that everyone looking at the same one?
Yeah.
Okay, Rich, I thought I saw that you had some.
No, that was Bob. That was Bob. That was me.
Oh, that was Bob? Bob?
Yeah.
Bob, you have some clerical.
The seven foot.
Yeah, it was the seven foot and it was corrected to, I don't have it right here in front of me, but it has to be more than seven seven feet from the corner. Before it read less than seven feet.
Oh, it, well, the one I have says more than seven feet.
That's so that's the corrected.
The corrected one.
Yeah. Okay, the original Terry said less than seven feet, seven feet or less from the corner.
Okay, hold on.
I I get the paper one that I've had for some time, and that's what it says.
See.
Okay, I just I want to. Okay, so it says the board agrees it is a max of and that the setback not more than seven feet. That's got to instead of more, that's got to say less.
Oh, it's probably opposite.
Correct.
Lot less than. Okay, what else was there, Bob, that you wanted to change?
No, that was it. It it had said before the setback not more than seven feet to the road, and it should have been seven feet or greater from the road.
The setback.
Under deliberation. Right at the end.
Yeah, okay, yeah. So that that the setback not be not be greater.
Let me get the, I'm looking at the incorrect one. Let me pull up the other one. Sorry, I'm having problems pulling up the corrected one. But I know she made the correction to. Does anybody else have it right available?
No. I'll find it.
I just have the paper draft that we received.
Minutes to approve. Uh, let's see.
All right, let's see here.
Yeah, on the original one that that she that Heather had said, it said that board agrees to conditions of max of thirty-five mean grade and the setback not more than seven feet to the road is what she said to us.
Yeah.
And then and then Bob brought it up. And she said, good, good catch. Thanks. I will update it and send a new draft. And then she sent another one here, and here it is. And let's take a little bit to load.
It it reads, yes, setback from road to be seven feet or greater.
Right.
Right, so can we just approve the minutes as the last revision?
That's, I don't have I don't have the last revision, so I've tried to write it down so I know exactly what it is.
She has from she has from road is one word. It should say thirty-five mean grade and that the setback from road to be seven feet or greater was the second revision.
Okay, so I can just write second revision and because I think I got that on my email somewhere.
Yeah, that's what she had in there.
Okay, so I can just put, I'll make a motion that we accept the minutes of July twelfth, first, two thousand and twenty as revised.
Correct.
Right, that's good.
Anybody second that?
I did.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We're going to do this as a roll call thing because we're not sitting with each other. Mark?
Mark, aye.
Uh, Rich?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Terry?
Aye.
Dave? Aye. Okay, unanimous. Okay, with all that said, unless there's any other business you guys want to discuss, I'll make a motion to adjourn our meeting.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye, aye. All right, gentlemen, thanks very much. I will.
Thank you.
If any of you guys are interested in how.